Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Alderman Pike?
Here.
Alderman Old?
Here.
Alderman Bell?
Present.
Alderman Lewis?
Here.
Alderman Bogart, Alderman Wilson. Can I get a motion to approve a May 16th, 2022, 2023 meeting?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Alderman Bear?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion approval of the night's agenda?
Sir?
Just gonna have a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Bear?
Aye.
We're on special items. Mitch Bogart? Permission to allow alcohol in the park for the YMCA softball season. Can you come to the podium, sir? State your name and address, please?
Mitch Bogsham. I live at 1210 Seminole Lane, apartment 301, Conneville. I'm here, I guess, my biggest thing is I'm not trying to promote alcohol. I just want you guys to be aware of what I'm taking as necessary steps to ensure that if the alcohol was allowed, what the rules in place would be. And I plan on bringing this up to the team captains meeting. It's gonna be a rule sheet and they'll have to sign their signature at the bottom. Basically, we have a one-strike rule. That is, any foul language, any detrimental to the property, any misconduct of any sort that I see, that other teams see, umpires see, one strike and they're done. That player is ejected. There's no refund for them. And the team will be allowed to pick up an additional player, but I plan on bringing that up, just the importance of getting ahead of it before it happens. I think it's very important for, you know, just a new league, especially adults. And that's my kind of push for it, because, you know, whether the alcohol gets lifted or not, adults are gonna be adults. And, you know, Sundays, I try to schedule on Sunday evenings, you know, trying to limit that. But that's my take, that's kind of from my stance. I just want you guys to know that I'm prepared to make adjustments whether we have alcohol allowed or not. Biggest thing is I just, you know, I want to provide an adult sport for the community. And I feel like slow pitches, it's had a lot of push and a lot of interest. So, right now, we have six teams signed up, so... Yeah, you guys got any questions?
What are the dates for your season?
So we start July, it's the first Sunday after the fourth, and we'll go until August. There's six Sundays there, so I think it's August 13th. The last Sunday will be a single-division tournament, as well as kind of a home run derby in there as well. Just trying to make it fun for them. The winner gets a $200 gift card to Woody's Pub and Grove, figured we'd wanna try to support local. And then we'll also have a plaque that we'll hang up with kind of a team photo of the winners at the YMCA. So, a lot of excitement. I know when we posted to Facebook, there was, I don't know how many shares, and just people commented on it. And some of those comments were if alcohol is gonna be allowed or not. Like I said before, I, you know, from a Y standpoint, I can't, I can't come up to you guys and be like, "Hey, we should drink and play softball." You know, that's, that's not my, not the values I live by through the Y. But I will tell you that I'm prepared to get ahead of the game and definitely jump on any sort of foul misconduct whatsoever, like I said, with the one-strike rule, so...
So would this just be for the players to be drinking? Would this be players and spectators? What is, what do you, what's the request?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'd say, you know, whoever comes, whether it's, yeah, whether it's, you know, families. I'm sure there's dads and moms, you know, showing up together, so, yeah, I'd say players and spectators.
Uh, you did bring it to the park board.
Yeah, I talked to them. They said I needed to come to you guys.
Yeah, we directed him here for the approval. They didn't really have a strong opinion, yes or no?
My personal, if you know, my personal opinion is whether we do this or not, people are still gonna drink. I can't babysit adults. I mean, I'm not gonna go over and look at every single cut they have, you know? But that's just my opinion. Regardless or not, you know, I'm gonna be very strict on our policy, whether it's allowed or not, so...
Yeah. Is it possible for the guys and whoever's involved to still have a good time if there is no alcohol allowed, or?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, I, that's not the, people are still gonna drink regardless, you know? Even if it's not allowed or allowed, they'll just pour it in a cup or something. But like, having it on Sunday evenings, you know, I originally thought maybe Thursdays would be fun, but also Thursdays is like, oh, thirsty Thursday, you know? It's, so, I figured Sunday evenings maybe would be a better, more family-friendly environment, so...
Do you think the turnout would be lower if the alcohol was denied?
I, I don't think so. I mean, people are still gonna come play, people are still gonna come support one another. There's a lot of unknowns in this first-year program. I really, I think, I expect good things to happen. And, you know, if we do have a successful year, I would love to build on it. I would love to create more of those programs in the future.
I think it's great. I appreciate the work that you're doing. And I think, like, if you look at surrounding communities, they've had adults. I mean, I played in the one in Jeff City where they were playing volleyball in Columbia. I mean, that's, people are used to it, and so I think you're right, I think they're gonna do it anyway, you know, either way. And, you know, some teams could decide to play in the Jeff City League or the Columbia League. And I'd like to get them here, eating dinner at Woody's or going to Woody's afterwards or whatever, right? So, I don't, I mean, I think we just waive the time period, you know, during the game or whatever, and try it out. I mean, it's, we kind of give ourselves a pilot, because if something happens this year, we can always revisit it. But I, I mean, people have been doing this for 50 years, and I've never heard of a problem finder, especially.
And I plan on having extra trashcans out there, and, I mean, I have my own team in it, so I'm gonna be there every Sunday. And, you know, the umpire, I've got full trust in him. Like I said, I'm gonna do everything I can to obviously keep, keep the area clean, well taken care of. I'll work the fields, and, you know, I'll be able to prep work too, so...
My one area of concern that I don't know that any of us can stop or resolve or answer, but the parking lot that's the closest to the ball field is not a city parking lot.
Yeah, I've been, I've been in contact with Trent, and he informed me, you know, it's, he was more worried about the trash, you know? And like I said, I, I plan on bringing that up at team meeting, you know, just telling him, you know, "Hey, you guys, we're Ashland community, and, you know, we only kind of do our part." Yeah, because I wanted to hear his thoughts, you know, because, you know, Friday football tailgates, you know, people are out there drinking and stuff. But he said nothing's ever been a problem, and they've all, you know, picked up their trash and done their due diligence. So, definitely a good question, though. And like I said, the first-year program, and I plan on being there every Sunday, and, you know, I just, I don't like my programs to fail, so I'm gonna do my part.
There's nothing in there right now. It would basically just be a motion from someone here to allow or disallow. Any other questions?
And I will say, you know, with the alcohol being permitted, I'm, I'm gonna discourage the idea of taking alcohol on the field, so I'm gonna push that at the team captains meeting. I don't like the idea of people carrying out a bottle of Boone's Farm to left field, you know? I'd rather, you know, keep everything in the dugout, so I'm gonna try to keep them, I'm gonna push the whole, you know, casual drinking, like I said, Sunday evenings, I don't want it, so...
Sure, I'm the city attorney and a thirsty guy, so I wish you luck. But your one-strike is right. And that's what I would tell you to impress upon the members of your organization. One drunk guy causes a serious problem, the police have to show up, and it's gonna change. But until that happens, cheers.
Can I get a motion approved?
I will move to suspend the no-alcohol-in-the-park rule, let's say, an hour before games on the schedule and half an hour after the last game. For the 2020-2030 season.
You're gonna do fall softball, too? Fall league or just summer league?
No, just, yeah, just the summer league to start. Hopefully in the future, I can get a, maybe a spring, summer rainfall, but baby steps.
One second.
Motion? All right, call from Alderman Pike? Nate? Alderman Old?
Aye.
Alderman Bell?
Aye.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Long Chip Beatty, YMCA fireworks, permanent application July 21st, 8:00 PM at the YMCA. Name and address, sir.
Chip Beatty, 15904 South Palace Nichols Road, Park City, Missouri, 6503.
Any questions you have in mind, or?
I guess I'm here on behalf of the ABC, so I don't even have questions for me. Didn't know I was on the agenda.
You did know it was?
What's that?
You did not know it was?
I never even thought about it, no. But I guess what I will speak to is the YMCA doing a fireworks show again, July 21st, 8 o'clock at the Y. We have insurance that we receive today on the fireworks show. We have, we are fundraising with the Ashland Coalition. We've got vendors lined up, food trucks. Questions, questions for me?
Is it on the 21st or the 22nd?
That's Saturday, whatever I put on application, 27th.
So I've seen this already advertised in the Chamber newsletter and on social media before the permits.
Yeah, I think it's that pending permit approval from the board.
I do appreciate that it's on a date that will not interfere with Fall Festival again.
Can you explain the date as far as why it's not somewhere in or around near the fourth?
Yeah, so we got with Ronnie Bay Senior, and he sells fireworks up until July 4th and the week after. So that would interfere with his selling fireworks, so this is the date that works best for him.
Any more questions?
And that's, it's gonna be at the YMCA, right?
Correct.
How do you handle, because some of those events have gotten really big, how are you gonna handle, like, overflow parking and stuff going forward?
Yep, so last year, Jose's was a sponsor as well, which I believe they are again this year. So hopefully parking Jose's parking lot, gives them fireworks, as you can see from a long way away. Now, they parked at the primary and elementary school parking lot last year, out of Liberty Church, the Wise Parking Lot. There were talks to shut down Main Street at one point, that ended up not happening with the pushback of the fireworks show. I don't know if that's how the Coalition wants to go forward this year, pushing it back or shutting the road down or not. But just talking with community partners, the church across the street as well, so hopefully we have no parking.
Good show, man.
What's that?
With the show, man.
That's an option.
That is an option. Okay.
How about places of restrooms?
Yep, so we'll have the YMCA unlocked to use our back door. And also, I think they're looking to get court potties as well to have on site.
Do you know how many?
Two or three, I believe, but don't pull me to that. But last year, we had just our bathroom at the Y, and Jose's was open, and it worked out pretty well last year. But, you know, some people left to use the restroom, and it didn't come back, so that's an issue. They're trying to address this year by keeping people there with court potties.
Surely you could find some responsive.
Maybe coffee company.
Don't pay for fireworks.
Couple hundred dollars.
That's the other thing I would say about the softball league. I know we're past that, but I know we got the new bathrooms out there. But people who are thirsty also need to use the restroom, and the one-part bathroom is far away. So that might be something in the future, if it gets really big, might need to add a court body out there on some of the nights, just FYI.
At the safe park, you said?
Yeah, I mean, there's two bathrooms there, right? That should be okay, but I don't know how big the crowds are.
You need two?
There's two, two bathroom structures with two restrooms each.
Yeah, it should be okay.
And there's sinks for it.
Don't give anybody the idea.
All right, can I get a motion to approve?
I do know also from talking with Brittany and Isabel, that they're fundraising right now, and they, they're already a fourth of the way done with fundraising. If for some reason they don't get their funds raised, the $5,000 that the city gave them will not go towards fireworks. They want me to make sure, let me get that.
So can I get a motion approving the YMCA fireworks permit application, which is locked, 22nd? Oh, I can't motion. Can I have a second, please? Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Alderman Bell?
Aye.
Alderman Old?
No.
And Alderman Pike?
Aye.
Moving on to scheduled public comments, I see none, make sure. Just a reminder that if you have public comments, it'd be in the meeting before the meeting, for the city clerk. Thanks, sir. Public hearing, none. Introductions and first readings, council vote number 2023-019, and we're gonna approve the Middle Creek subdivision preliminary plat, it was tabled on 516.
All right. This is a report regarding the preliminary plat for the subdivision, the proposed subdivision, or as Middle Creek. Property owner is Corey Myers Development and a submitting engineer. Nearing firm is Engineering Surveys and Services, John Conway's engineer reviewed this preliminary plat. I can't tell you the engineer and owner, it's also here if you guys have questions. I won't go over all the details again. But basically, this was originally proposed a couple of years ago as a 116-lot subdivision, mixed subdivision, mixed zoning. Due to various reasons, including lack of available sewer capacity, the current plat has been reduced to nine lots. Their lots range in size from Park City, 1.28 acres, to 6.36 acres. The proposed subdivision preliminary plat consists of lots 1 through 7 for single-family, R1 homes, and lot 8 is proposed for a single-family as well, currently is R2, and lot 9 is to remain seen and entered commercial. A hammerhead turnaround is to be installed at the North End of Billy Joseph, but due to its park 70 and the short length of street, there is not one required adjusted lane. There's also to be a small barn built on the south side, lot 4, to control stormwater runoff to the existing homeowners to the south. The issues for what it was tabled, I believe, are city utilities, which the owner and engineer speak on behalf of, and also for the sidewalks and maybe connectivity of Billy Joseph. And the department wrote. So, staff was supportive of the preliminary plat, and this was also approved by planning and zoning commission. They made nice meeting with the condition that city sewer would be connected to all lots.
Me, yes?
I got a question. Has your, feeling, feeling is probably the best word that I come up with. What is your feeling about this proposal this week versus when it was proposed initially? Do you feel better about the proposal or worse?
It's still the same with the connection of the public utilities. It does meet the requirements of planning and zoning and more so for the city code. The sidewalks, it's, I mean, I'm kind of indifferent at this point. It's a pretty rural location, as far as all the lots wouldn't necessarily have to have a sidewalk. It's only the ones that have road punch would need the public blocks. It meets the requirements of the city code other than the sidewalks.
Do you feel like the proposal as is is something that has the future in mind for the city of Ashland, Ashland's future as far as development's concerned? Or is it kind of a, maybe a stopgap measure for any hope?
So, this tract of land could be maybe better utilized, but, I mean, the estate lots that are, they're in other cities, they're in the middle of cities, they are proposed. It's R1 zoning, and that's what the comprehensive plan showed, you know? So it's hard to say that it's not an acceptable use of the land.
Is the owner of the land here tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I see him raise his hand.
Yeah, we tried to do the 116 lots, and we paid for half the sewer, sewer study with the city. And it cost about four and a half million dollars to upgrade the sewer systems. And we were on track, so I thought, work on getting that done. And it's kind of changed hands, and everyone's changed, and it kind of went in a different direction. So, we've worked on actually developing this around different ways. And this is basically the best way we can develop it now, with what I'm up against and the city's up against.
So the lack of sewer alignment that was in the plans that Christine discovered and that she reviewed, has that been?
I can, Corey Burkle, Engineering Surveys and Services, also an Ashland resident, 404 Brian Lane. The site plan submittal and the sewer is really a separate issue that would come before the, their, this preliminary plat, all the utility easements are provided to be able to provide all of the utilities to serve the lots. And it wasn't clear when we initially submitted the preliminary plat what was gonna be required, what was gonna be allowed with the sanitary sewers. So now that it's being required that we connect two city sewers, yes, we will submit the sanitary sewer plants to extend those to each lot. As part of the site plan submittal and final plat submittal that will come before you. The city will reuse site plans, and then you'll have the final plat come before you again for final approval. And I would just, you know, reiterate that the developer and the plans, preliminary plat, has met the requirements of the city code, has met the zoning requirements, and also they've really, they've really met all the requirements to be, to meet the city code currently.
Yeah, just a comment, you know, I'm not opposed to the idea of reducing the number of lots. In fact, I think that's a good idea. I think that would be in your favor. You know, my only concern is the connectivity. You know, it's one of my pet peeves is the number of dead-end streets that we have. You know, where one developer didn't really communicate with the next developer, and we ended up with these streets to nowhere. And, you know, right there at Billy Joseph, if the change isn't made now, while it's still in the planning stage, to move forward and connect, you know, to the north, you know, in the most economically of way to do that.
There's not a real good economic, economical way to do it, but one, one benefit of that street not connecting is the water, that the problem that that water creates in that area. So, you know, putting more streets there is gonna cause more water. And I think y'all been and will all see in the existing with Brussells and Devil Root to where that area, and I think it'll actually help that area in that aspect. And if it is bigger lots, state lots, nobody wants a street going through the state lots.
But at this time, you know, I think, isn't Billy Joseph going into your, one of your larger ones, the six acres? You know, if it's just a matter of paperwork right now to maybe reduce the size of that lot, increase the size of the lot across the street to, to be able to shoot to the north, you know? This would be the time to do it, if it's ever gonna be done.
Well...
You know, I understand, once you start developing, you're not gonna be cut across people's lawn.
It's, it's money, that's one part. And if it meets the city code, you know, I don't know how I can be forced to put a street in for a future connectivity. Nothing's there anyways at this point. But I do see what you're saying, but I've met the, the city codes.
Are you gonna sell the lot, excuse me, are you gonna sell the lots or you gonna build on the lots?
I'm not sure. I'm gonna sell them, but I'm not sure if I'm gonna make a building exclusive or not.
Any other questions, boy?
No, I'm with Rick. I don't like the fact that it's not connecting, but I do understand if it's meeting the current code.
It's meeting the current code in terms of meeting the requirements of the preliminary plat. It does not necessarily mean that it meets your desires or expectations.
Have we had anything, I know this Alderman Bogart had a lot of questions and conversations at the last meeting.
Nothing additional there. The only thing that he is still desiring is a change to the hammerhead. What was that being?
Did he email you? Because I had a phone call with him. He says he emailed you and said, "Take that off the table."
The last email I got from him said that he didn't like the hammerhead.
Okay.
So how hard would that be to change it to a roundabout or a circle? Coldestack, I don't know. I'm still using those. So how hard would it be?
But I don't, I don't know why I would be, there are several hammerheads in town. If that's just a preference of, you know, put a, put a coldestack there. Yeah, I mean, it's not possible, but I don't know, if that's just a preference thing, it just doesn't really make sense to me. No, I've got a lot of other projects going on, and I donated the ground to the school. And I'm trying to do good for the community, but, you know, I can only do so much.
Right, I understand that.
Any other questions?
What, what is the drawback to a hammerhead that Nate was concerned about? Like, what?
Turnaround, that's part of it.
Yeah, I mean, just the ease of being able to turn around there. Most of the hammerheads that we have in place right now are at existing dead ends, not at the end of somebody's driveway. With this being a permanent juncture, I think that's more or less what he was looking at.
But the hammerhead would allow for emergency vehicles to turn around in that?
May I address that? Just on the, you know, coldestacks versus, versus hammerhead. The hammerhead meets the requirements for a fire truck turnaround. Ideally, this, you know, would continue to be a low-traffic area. I don't think we want to encourage, you know, a lot of people to go down there and flip the loop in the, in the coldestack. So I think, to me, having it set up like we do with the hammerhead encourages it to be more of a private, tight turnaround where people aren't encouraged to go down there and then flip around in the loop of a, of a coldestack. I, to me, from an engineering perspective, I think that's the better solution here.
Would we, would you have driveways from those future lots?
I would anticipate...
Connecting to that, or will they come in from?
I would anticipate the driveways would connect off the ends of the hammerhead to connect to the lots.
I have one question. Do you feel like the, if you were, if you were required to make sure that both communities are connected to the street there as opposed to the hammerhead or a loop there, do you feel like that would be cost prohibitive? You wouldn't be able to make a profit?
Yeah.
If we did demand that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went over the cost, and it's, it's, you know, if the sewer was there and the city had the right sewer to support it, then yeah, I'd be all for it, but if I put a street in there, it's not, it costs too much to develop it.
So, can we get a motion to approve table?
So can we get a motion to approve table or deny?
I probably would not take a table at this point.
Yeah.
Table at once.
So approve it or deny it? I have a motion to approve or deny.
I'm making a motion to deny.
Can I have a second?
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Got that, I have a second.
I'll second.
Alderman Plank?
Nate?
Alderman Old?
Aye.
Alderman Bell? And Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember number 2023-022 in ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into animal control enforcement cooperative agreement.
This is an annual renewal of our animal control agreement with county. There'll be a 76 cent per hour increase to cover the salary increases that they experienced in their department. So it's forty-six dollars eighty-four cents per hour on the callouts. I don't know how long this agreement has been in place, predates me, long time.
It, they did it sometime in the last six years, when I first started here, there wasn't an agreement and, you know, James may actually remember better than me.
Vividly.
Uh, animal control is good. Yeah, it's, it's something that we want to keep going because we don't have the
So many.
The training or the facilities to handle animals nor the desire.
Didn't we have a fair amount last year?
Yeah, that's a conservation issue though, this is like domesticated animals that.
Dogs out, leeches.
Yeah, dogs at large, aggressive dogs, that kind of stuff.
Still no questions? All right. Motion to approve Councilmember number 2023-022 in ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an animal control enforcement cooperative agreement. I have a motion please. Shoot it. I have a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Plank?
Aye.
Alderman Old?
Aye.
Alderman Bell?
Aye.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Old Business, ordinance number 1443 in ordinance approving Southland tract split final plat.
All right, again, this is the second read for this, so it's just a, a lot split reconfiguration of parcels. The property, this is for Southland tract split replat final. That's Southwest subdivision to replats. The two parcels, lot one and two, to become seven and eight, the property owner, whole parcel, is when Scott Construction, submitting engineering firm, Florida Engineering, right? Acting on behalf of Lombardo Homes, and this was reviewed by John Conway City Engineer. So basically, phase seven will be approximately 22 acres, phase eight will be approximately 22, I'm sorry, phase seven will be 22.03 acres, phase eight will be approximately 22.08 acres. This reconfiguration of the two parcels is to align the parcel with the post phases seven and eight. Staff is supported by this preliminary plat, parcel reconfiguration, as this was approved by planning and zoning motion on May 9th.
Okay, good motion to approve, ordinance number 1443 in ordinance approving Southland tract split final plat.
Seven.
I have a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Alderman Bell?
Aye.
Alderman Old?
Aye.
And Alderman Plank?
Nate?
Motion carries. Order number 1444 in ordinance approving Southland plat seven, eight, preliminary plat.
Okay, this is, this report is for the preliminary plat, of the post phase seven and eight, Southwest subdivision. Again, the owner is when Scott Construction, Florida Engineering, some of the firm, Lombardo Homes. Or gave the information about the sizes. And so this is basically to create a preliminary plat for subdivision. Last time, and this was again, the only issue planning has only had with it was the sidewalks along Henry Clay. And they, of course, the variance, but since then we've had discussions about escrow on the sidewalks or from Lombardo just to put in the sidewalks. The escrow amount hasn't really been discussed with Lombardo yet. But either way, one of the two would be done. So that's pretty much legit.
How many homes did you say it would be built?
Ninety-seven, the two faces.
Do you have any idea what the general estimate would be as far as the number of schoolchildren that would be increased in Southern County because of this particular home plat?
I would not even want to take stab at that. I don't think they would have a bad idea or.
Two per household.
Okay.
They'd probably use like 24 per household planning purposes, they don't probably even use one.
Fifty? No, I'm just kidding.
At least fifty? I got another question.
Yep.
If a homeowner, after the, the house is built, the homeowner comes to this particular developer and says, hey, we have a problem with water drainage in our yard, what would be the developer's stance on this as far as helping that particular homeowner?
So from a home builder standpoint, I don't want to, you know, just from my experience, I don't, I can't say what they will do, so I won't.
That's the right answer.
Okay.
Darren is a former home builder, so that's. Is the owner of the land here tonight that could possibly answer that question?
Uh, the owner is not, but they're, they're engineer.
Okay.
I'm Chris Sander with Lecor, our office at 1901 Pennsylvania Drive in Columbia. Doug Nance had a medical procedure today, so he apologized for not being able to attend this evening. Lombardo is, they will, their intent is to build all the homes on these lots, so they're not only a developer, but they'll be home builder as well. And one of the things that Lombardo has done, they, they hire an engineer to do a grading plan for each home site, plot plan that's above and beyond what a normal builder, what is often done. So they look into taking care of drainage, making sure that we're looking at the utilities at a, at a much more defined level, you know, for each particular house footprint. The, the, they provide, because they're the builder as well as the developer, they provide warranty with the, the homes. And so there's a very different ongoing relationship with the final homeowner than, than some of the developers. Be a different operation than the builder.
Can you explain the warranty a little bit more in depth?
I, I'm sorry, I don't know the details of exactly what they do offer, so.
I would venture to speculate, I mean, this is a reasonable concern, drainage is always a problem. Drainage is a multi-variable calculus problem, there's a million variables about it. But generally speaking, if a properly designed, properly plotted, they can search the topography, if after all the due diligence and attention is made, a particular homeowner does indeed have a drainage problem, their first response is not, I want my city to come help me. There is, that's a, a position that I would want the city to stay out of in most instances. We don't give the good housekeeping seal of approval to guarantee that nothing will ever go wrong on any subdivision that we approve. You know, we approve developments that are in accordance with our ordinances and regulations, that are in accordance with your political judgment. And to the extent that, that judgment occasionally results in an unhappy camper on a particular spot, and that certainly, I'm not discounting your concern, but I, I don't think that it's something that can be reliably predicted this early in the process. And it's not something that a city would volunteer to sort out necessarily. Does that make sense what I'm saying? I don't always just speak overly, but I think that's.
Another thing to keep in mind is on your average preliminary plat, when they're designing the stormwater improvements, they typically have no idea what type of home will be built there. In this particular instance, what Lombardo is building, they know exactly what type of house will be fitting on each lot. So they're really going above and beyond. In this particular instance, as it relates to stormwater. Other situations, there's no telling what the, the home builder will do and how that will affect the engineered drainage of that lot. And what we, the enforcement body for that at that point, because it's quite a small disturbance.
And, and to speak on behalf of, from the city's standpoint, it, it is a lot easier when you have one home builder and a development that you're responsible as opposed to this guy built this house, this guy built this house, but three houses down, this homeowner's having a problem, which is a completely different builder, that the other two homeowners have problems with.
They're.
So when you have one builder accountable, it makes a lot.
All right, can we get a motion to approve, ordinance number 1445 in ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter?
With that, the ordinance will need to be amended via this motion to stipulate that sidewalks will either be constructed or escrow submitted, however you want to, to put a rider on that prior issuance of the final plat, prior to issuance of building permits, whatever is your prerogative, because currently that is not addressed in the ordinance.
You know, okay, so can we get a motion to approve with, with amendment that they submit the sidewalks? Or do they do that?
That's progress, bro. Yes, thanks. For future instructions, I'm saying.
Can we get a motion please? I'll make that motion. I have a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Plank?
Nate?
Alderman Old?
Aye.
Alderman Bell?
Aye.
And Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Ordinance number 1445 in ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter, enter into an animal control enforcement cooperative agreement. Same as before? Same as before? I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Alderman. Alderman Bell? And Alderman Old?
Aye.
And Alderman Plank?
Aye.
The resolution adopting the revised personnel plan.
Sent out the old and new manual last week for review. Hopefully that's time to go over that and receive some comments from Dave on that, just some minor things that need to be fixed. But other than that, no comments received, happy to field any questions, and it was a lengthy document, so I apologize for that. But a statement memo, it needed to be fleshed out and made a little bit longer.
I think I made like ninety changes, but some of them were serious, some of them were topical. But it's, it's a good short to do, a lot of cities don't do it because it is kind of a hassle. But you get these things that are ten years out of date, they don't mention new laws and things, so. It's a good short to do, glad you all did it.
I, I do have a question, so there is a provision about like education reimbursement? And I know, like, haven't we talked about paying for, like, police training? So does there be like?
We've always had tuition reimbursement in the policy manual, at least since the, the burden had been adopted. The issue that we were running into is we didn't really have clear direction on how we were going to do that, so I wanted to flesh that section out. We do, outside of that specific tuition reimbursement, we do budget for training on an annual basis, but this would be like something wanting to go pursue, you know, associates, bachelors, go to Rankin.
It's sort of like an existing employee, public works guy, he's been here for two years, wants to get more schooling.
I understand that, but aren't you paying for the new guy to go to training?
Well, that's, yes, we are, and that's, so that's actually coming out of the police department's training budget. And in this case, where, incidentally, we're going to talk about this here in a minute, but we've got an officer that's about to graduate the master's program, and he began his educational journey when he worked at Jeff City and they paid for his education, like, non-law enforcement education. He's becoming accountant on, you know, the government's, essentially the government's paying him to, to go to school, and that's what this policy addresses. And only to add to what Kyle said, I think this came up this time because the question was raised, okay, so if one of my guys wants to go to college and have the city reimburse him, where does that money come from?
But then I guess the policy manual, like, if we hire someone else and suddenly we say, yeah, we're not going to pay for your training. There's no policy in here to address us paying for police officer training. Because this is not, because this says you have to wait a year, and he didn't have to wait a year.
I mean, sending them to the academy is an entirely different situation of which we have separate board action and agreements in place for. This would be, again, for someone just wanting to go personal enrichment, I want to go take underwater basket weaving at Columbia College.
Yeah.
That's what we're kind of.
That may or may not be related to your job.
Yeah, I get that, I would just say if we're putting this, talking about, you know, education, when you're employed by the city, I would add something like, you know, in the case of a police officer that needs upfront training, the employee can apply before a year with board approval to go get the training as long, and it comes out of the police budget or whatever.
I mean, if we're at a point where we want to take on the stance that that is the standing policy, that we're going to start doing that, this was kind of a unique situation where we had surplus budget due to lack of staff in the police department as well as a diary to attract staff, to just happen to be presented with two suitable candidates to sponsor at the academy. I don't know if it's necessarily going to be the standing policy, at least not in the current fiscal cycle. That's certainly something, when we review this next year and work on the budget next year, if that's a policy, if the board would be interested in adding as a standing policy at the police department.
Just something I thought wasn't in there, and then on page seventeen, I think, where it talks about election activities? Where, what page is that?
I made quite a few changes to that. I did.
Oh, page twenty-four. If you're at the top of the page, that third line, there's a statute that relates to that third paragraph. And it basically says you can't use city resources to promote anything with, and then it says without the written consent of the city administrator. You cannot consent to someone using city resources to, you can for civic, social, or business, but you cannot for political.
Well, it's the Hatch Act, you're right.
It's not the Hatch, it's a state.
The, the shape version of the Hatch Act.
So I think it's the top of page twenty-four. So I think they would break that into two paragraphs and just say no employee will use any city resources for political campaigning, pursue it to, whatever that statute number is, I can get it for you. And then, secondly, you can't use city resources for like ABC or for the Y and C or for whatever without written.
Absolutely, I agree with you. It's just no oversight on my part. You can't run for Alderman and use the city copy machine.
Bill Webster went to prison, federal prison for using the copier, the AG's office, it's illegal.
It's just no oversight.
Yeah.
I tore out a lot of stuff there, but it's that. And I don't remember what it's called, the federal version of the Hatch Act.
Yeah.
Are you in the old version by chance, because political activity's not on page twenty-four, it's on page thirty-one of the new version?
Maybe I am, did we change it? Okay, let me find the new citation, is it still in there? I would just cite that statute, make sure we're prohibiting people from doing that that they know.
So, the RISMO, I keep up my finger, I find the one for state employees. But I'm, I know you're right.
Okay, so I'm in the wrong one, but is it the same language in the new one?
I don't think so, I think that whole section's been cut and rewritten in the new one.
I didn't major charge right now.
Either way, I do think there were, like, especially with the tax vote, I think everyone needs to be made aware that you can't use your city email for that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I have like eight pages on prohibiting certain political things that he cut down to less, so. Get in the new version and see if, it's definitely not.
I've got the new version right here. I've got the new version right here.
I got it.
Her point, though, is well taken. There's no gray area on that point. If I, I presume it was my mistake, I just neglected to change that particular one.
Can you copy and paste anything?
Yeah, that's what I... Either way, you can...
I'll pick your end. What service? Questions?
Nope.
I got a question. It's for Kyle. Kyle, what's the most important addition that you feel like you've made to the policy manual?
Order one is probably our temporary transitional duty policy. Since we didn't have one, and we had a pretty scary injury last year, we had an officer on light duty, still on light duty. So lack of policy is something that we learned that we need to really address for that particular instance. So that's probably the most substantive change to this. But again, we expanded a lot of the language for most sections because we had, you know, two sentences for things that needed to be well more thought out and explained. Even our, you know, our disciplinary policy and how we handle progressive discipline, that went from, you know, a couple of paragraphs to a couple of pages to make sure we have the correct procedures for everybody to follow there.
Thank you.
I get a motion to approve the resolution adopting revised personnel plan.
With step change.
With step change.
With change.
And I will say, thanks for guys' work. I know, Kyle, you sent your email that you thought it was going to be a little bit easier than... And these things, you're always thinking, I'm just going to go in and update this. And then once you start tinkering, it turns into a bigger project. So I know it's a lot of work. And, you know, having, I think it's important work, but it's kind of one of those projects that you can cut off for a long time. So I appreciate all the work that was done on it.
And I appreciate that flattery. And quite frankly, one of the problems with this is you can, we have people who want an employee handbook that's ten pages. Our, we have cities that have, you know, three hundred pages. It's always hard to know, you know, what level of specificity do you need, what kind of things you have. So I appreciate Kyle's input and the ability to try and get to me in its tail, with the kind of concerns you all have, without getting crazy.
So moved with my changes.
Second?
All second.
Alderman Plank?
Aye.
Alderman O?
Aye.
Alderman Bell?
Aye.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
A resolution of the Board of Alderman of Ashland Missouri awarding the bid for South Main Street Waterline and Resurfacing Project to Eilman Landscaping and Construction LLC. I get it. Staff report.
I heard there was a hiccup there. I don't know what to say. Still have that memo, agenda memo? You still have that agenda memo? Give me your copy.
I don't have mine, I didn't bring mine.
Oh, my goodness, here.
As I say, you need that. Print a copy.
Must have changed from what was emailed out.
You want to...
I had it out on speed until a month ago.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, before you seeking his request to issue a notice of award, there have been a couple hiccups in the last few hours regarding some documentation with the engineer firm, Allstate Consultants. But this is pertaining to the South Main Street Waterline and Road Resurfacing Project. We anticipate this project will be complete over the summer in efforts to try and minimize the traffic disruptions, particularly with school, as South Main Street being a major thoroughfare for school routes. Bid opening was completed on the eighteenth. The two bids received, Eminem Landscaping and Construction LLC was the apparent low bidder. Staff had some options there with bid option one, alternate one, and alternate two. Ultimately, bid option one was selected by staff and agreed with by our consultant engineer to be the best option. That will entail the installation of the new waterline on South Main Street from Broadway to South Interclay, along with the looping of said waterline across the south side of Sappington Drive to allow for better fire flows in that area. And on completion of that, the entire stretch of South Main from Broadway to South Interclay will be resurfaced with a three-inch mill and three-inch overlay. So we'll do asphalt, address some of the settling road base concerns that have happened over the last several years, and bring South Main Street up to where it needs to be.
So what was the difference between the bid option one and the alternates that were being proposed or been bid out that you guys decided not to?
So, you know, looking at the bids, there was about, on average, fifty-five to sixty thousand dollar difference between bid option one and alternate one, which alternate one was going to be a two-inch asphalt overlay with concrete repairs where the new water main was installed. For the additional cost versus having a three-inch asphalt full width mill and overlay, we felt that it was best to come back with that three-inch surface, three-inch overlay surface, and bring everything down to flush to help eat up a lot of the settling that was occurring on those, on those, the southbound lane. That settling, as someone who lives on South Main Street, has been there for a long time. Staff opinion, my particular personal opinion, is that that settling has, it occurred yet several years ago, and it really hasn't moved since. It was only exacerbated by the South Main Street sidewalk project in 2019. But at that point, we recognize that this project is coming at some point in the future, and that's why we had the contractor go ahead and set that curve at the appropriate grade where it is now, so that when this project finally came to fruition, we could fix it back proper.
What were the hiccups that have been experienced the last...
It's documentation and getting, it's getting bid bonds acquired and things like that. Things that are part and parcel of the process in a project like this. The issue is that everyone's chomping at the bit to get this rolling because we all want to make sure that it gets completed before the end of summer.
So what are the plans for diverting traffic? Or how is that all going to work? Or is that going to be at the discretion of the contractor, or is they do the work? Or is that going to be something you?
Well, the apparent low bidder, MMLC, was gracious enough to come to the meeting this evening. They're in the audience behind me, and they came early so that we could discuss just that. We've discussed some of the various options versus a lane drop or a permanent closure for the duration of the project, or closure to, through traffic. In discussing that, we think that the best option is going to be a closer to, closure to through traffic. Still allows those residents, people that are frequenting your businesses that are along South Main Street, to continue. But hopefully, will decrease the amount of traffic to let these folks work and get in and out in order to try and meet the timeline that we've requested then.
And the timeline, again, you feel like is from when to when?
Ideally, what is this, the sixth? We would like to see, within a couple of weeks of receiving the notice of award, that the contractor is going to obtain their bid bonds and various requirements that we put upon them. Our engineer can verify that everything is complete and accurate on his end, and that they can, during that time, the preliminary locates can be done, utility locates, coordination with utility companies that we're going to have to address, and start towards the end of June, early part of July, with a hopeful, hopeful completion date of August twenty-eighth, as school begins on August twenty-ninth.
Are there any penalties, if penalties or rewards at all, as far as timeliness of the construction?
I don't know that we have any liquidated damages on this contract. Or, let me back up. The contract isn't complete yet. This is merely a notice of award of the project so that they can begin. The contract will come before the board in the coming weeks, as it's completed and finalized with, working with Allstate Consultants. I don't know, there's different tools of thought on liquidated damages. I think they have their value, but I think they also cost you money long term because contractors have to figure that into their equation when they're doing their bids.
So the chances are probably pretty good that, you know, because construction, there's always unexpected problems.
Certainly.
We're probably, I'm guessing, there's a good chance that we'll go beyond August twenty-eighth. Would that be a fair assumption?
I think, I think that is a fair possibility. South Main Street being as old as it is, we know there's going to be a lot of unknowns underneath that roadway. That being said, the lion's share of the work that will be the most disruptive to traffic will be the waterline. That is going to be the first part of the project, is the completion of the waterline. After that is complete, then it is really treated no more than a mill and overlay project that we do on a, on a annual basis. Those we were able to, you know, I would imagine that the paving subcontractor would be able to certainly do one lane in one day, and the other lane in the next day. During the day, when we've had mill and overlay projects in the past, they've been accommodating to wait until school traffic had eased up to begin, and making sure that they had opened roads back up when school traffic picked up again around three o'clock in the afternoon.
Are the waterlines under the southbound or northbound are right directly in the center of the street?
Well...
To your knowledge.
Oh, yeah, South Main Street, you know, one of our favorite streets in town, has waterlines under the northbound lane and sewer line under the southbound lane.
So will you be providing a note to my employer that I have to work from home, please?
Try, I don't know if it's way up the period, but I will pass along whatever is needed.
We'll see.
Can we ask questions of the owner of Eminem? Can we ask questions? Yeah, come on. Just wanted to thank you for, for, you know, putting in a bid and everything. How long have you been in business?
Twenty-three years.
Have you done similar projects like this?
Most certainly, yes. We've done, we'll do complete water distribution systems for the whole town. We'll do total street rehab. We just finished up a project, we've got a couple of them going for Boone County, Chad Henry Public Water District up around Columbia. We did around fourteen thousand feet of water lines. The spring, the last fall, we had about the same. We've done Cole County, Tannen Bridge Road, road improvements, where we lowered the road, took the asphalt out, new stormwater improvements. City land, same thing, you know, complete rehab of a road.
How many projects have you done in Ashland? This would be your first one?
This would be my first one with you guys, yes. We usually have a pretty good rapport with everybody, city drivers, same, you know, any of our references. We check those on this front, we've got really good references.
Thank you.
Can we get a motion to approve a resolution of the Board of Alderman of Ashland Missouri awarding the bid to, for South Main Street Waterline and Resurfacing Project to Eminem Landscaping and Construction? I got a second?
All second.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Alderman Bell?
Aye.
Alderman O?
Aye.
And Alderman Plank?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a supplemental agreement, number one, with TW Eilman, relating to the TAP grant sidewalk and trail project, sir.
Mr. Mayor, before you, is an agenda item regarding the requirement to complete a cultural resource survey for part of the area of the TAP grant sidewalk and trail project. It was determined, through part of the checkoff process with MODOT and utilization of federal funds, for a project of this nature, you have to complete several different steps, one of which is the State Historical Preservation Office, they commonly call it SHPO. SHPO reviews the area and makes a determination as to whether or not the area has most likely been disturbed for the last several decades. I don't know the exact number of years. That being said, they determined that the part of the project behind the YMCA is most likely what they categorize as undisturbed areas that contain intact archaeological deposits. And archaeological sites have been documented in similar settings in the county. So, as MODOT is the administrator of this project with the TAP grant, they have instilled the requirement that we complete a cultural resource survey to verify whether or not we are going to be interfering with any archaeological sites or materials.
So what happens if they find a grave site?
Then...
The whole project's done?
It's going to get held up for a long time. Much like recently, there was a project with the bridge that the water that was found that goes back to Bill's icebox, delays lots of money, you know, no big deal.
And they couldn't have determined that we needed to do this as part of the process before?
Nothing goes to SHPO until after it's all been accepted and the project's began.
That is the most inefficient thing I've seen. So what's the survey entail? I mean, like, are you just out there with a metal detector? I mean, I don't, like, are they digging stuff? Are they going to actually come dig?
Yes, they will. They're, we have two different options, one from SCI Engineering Incorporated, and one from WSP USA Engineering and Infrastructure Incorporated. And reading the proposals, they each entailed a fair amount of historical research, one day of fieldwork, where they would have one or two, or a handful of staffers that would come out, walk through the area, look around. I'm assuming they'll probably do some sampling of some type. And, and then they would provide a report. The unfortunate part is that a phase one cultural resource survey should be completed within about three months of receipt of the notice to proceed. So at a minimum, it's added three months and the expense to this project, which certainly guarantees that this project will not get completed in 2023. It will be 2024 before this project is able to move forward with construction. Because this is just one step in the process. We still haven't even got to the point of having preliminary design to submit to MODOT for approval, and then go back for final design. And so it's a, it's a deal.
So since this is an additional requirement by MODOT, are they going to award additional funds to cover it?
I don't know that they'll award additional, well, it is an eligible expense. So in the memo, the one that we recommend is with SCI for seventy-six hundred dollars, plus an additional five hundred dollars if any curation is required for anything that they might find. Up to eighty-one hundred dollars, that is reimbursable expense at the eighty-twenty rate. So eighty percent of that would be reimbursable through the grant project. So long-term, we're not looking at, let me back that up. Long-term, we don't believe at this point that we're looking at a lot of money, but it all depends on what is discovered, if anything. And that being said, right now, the short-term, we anticipate an expense of up to sixteen hundred and twenty dollars added on the project that will be coming out of pocket of the co-applicants between us, the school district, and the YMCA.
But just because it's a reimbursable expense, if that wasn't factored into the budget, and we still have the other expenses, we're going to exceed the dollar amount unless they award one or a fund.
That's a fair point. Unfortunately, there was no guidance provided as to whether or not they increase the total budget. I would hope that it does.
I would hope too, but if you don't ask, it certainly won't.
Certainly. I, if this notice to proceed is granted, then this process will then be submitted to MODOT because they would have to sign off on it before anything could actually begin. In dealing with our LPA representative, Johnny Prenger, we talk weekly. We touch base with her about just that.
And the other partners that would be splitting the potential expenses are aware of this?
We've certainly looked them in. It's, it's a very delicate project because of the way that it is funded, between the school district and the YMCA providing financial, and the city providing labor. I mean, it still has a financial value, you're not getting me wrong, but trying to juggle... I mean, it still has a financial value, don't get me wrong, but trying to juggle that in a manner where everyone still feels that they're coming out fair and equal is tricky.
Have you heard any feedback from the school or why on this?
Nothing other than, okay, what can we do? We're required to do it. Because, I mean, at the at the end of the day, if it if we didn't agree to do it, then we would have to forego the award from the tap grant and then any funds, excuse me, any expenses accrued thus far through engineering would be the responsibility of the school co-applicants.
Any other questions?
Can I have a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number one with T W E M relating to tap grant sidewalk and trail project?
Have a second?
Second.
Alderman Plank?
Aye.
Alderman Old?
Aye.
Alderman Bell? And Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Moving on. A resolution of the Board of Alderman of Ashland, Missouri awarding the bid for project number S four zero three zero zero one for the Perry Avenue extension to MML landscaping and construction.
Mr. Mayor, before you is another request for a notice to award. Similar issues before, we're having some technicalities. Trying to get that contract document ready for signing, but we anticipate that it'll be ready within the end of the week. Our engineers headed out of town and we're trying to get that sorted out. But you may have heard of them, MMLC, the apparent low bidder on this project. We have had multiple discussions regarding timeline, other projects that they may or may not have had notice of award given to, and what the requirements are looking like, along with our deadline of October thirty-first. We had the bid opening on June first. There were six companies that submitted bids and MMLC was again the apparent low bidder. With that, the bids came in low enough that we were able to include in the bid process, we had base bid A, which was a twenty-seven foot wide roadway, the length of the project to connect Perry Avenue to Industrial Drive coming out of East Ashland Plaza. Base bid B was the water line and combined bid along with alternate A or even alternate one, which was to increase that roadway width to thirty-two feet, which would be matching the existing streets. We simply put in the twenty-seven foot option in efforts to save money. This was done several months ago, back when the construction markets were a little more volatile and we were concerned that we'd be able to bring this project in under budget at all. Along with alternate two, the construction of a five-foot sidewalk to the twenty-four foot of this road. The combined total for all these options from the apparent low bidder was five hundred ninety-six thousand seven hundred forty dollars and forty cents. We have a remaining budget for this project of seven hundred fifteen thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars. That was over eight hundred thousand initially, but just under ninety thousand dollars was spent on preliminary engineering in FY twenty-three. We anticipate that there will still be some additional engineering expenses, observation, testing, things of that nature, along with whatever overruns may come in. But staff is confident that we can proceed with all portions of the bid, base bid A and B, along with alternate one and two, based off of these current numbers and get all of this completed this year till where it is done. We don't have to go back to try and figure out how to widen our road or we're at a sidewalk later on.
Good. Any questions?
Yeah, I mean, these are two big projects that we're looking to award to the same company. And I think I saw somewhere in the packet where you have eight employees. Is it feasible?
Nine, yes.
Is it feasible to do both of these projects and whatever else you've got?
Yes. I'm good. I'm not worried. It's about two projects at the same time.
All right, can I give a motion approving a resolution of the Board of Alderman of Ashland, Missouri awarding a bid for project number S four zero three zero zero one for the Perry Avenue extensions to MML landscaping and construction?
Have a second?
A second.
Alderman Plank?
Aye.
Alderman Old?
Aye.
Alderman Bell?
Aye.
And Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Moving on to report. Kyle, have you heard anything on the light poles, the red butter?
Nothing.
Yeah, and safe place program, still working on that one with Alicia. Probably can do that tomorrow with her and also, you know, as we kind of talked about last time it came up, I think that's probably something that needs to be joined between Angler's Fire and PD, so keep pushing on.
And have a supplemental for Gabe, a quick question. Speeding on crumpling or prep roads. We had somebody call the other night, they're out in the county, of course. Boone County responded, took them thirty minutes to get down here. Why wouldn't they just call one of us?
Well, so whenever they, I assume they called joint communications as we. So whenever joint communications fields that call, they enter the location of the caller, enter the location of the issue and it's dispatched based on who's, you know, the CAD computer sees, oh, that's out in the county, so that goes to the Sheriff's Department versus APD. So the.
If you had called in and said there was a murder, they would get the first available unit.
Right.
For a speeding ticket.
Or the which jurisdiction it is is what.
Plus drag rights, they're drag rights.
And it's it also, like, how long ago was that?
Couple months ago.
Couple nights ago? I mean, it's entirely possible that the officer that was working overheard the call or saw the call on the computer and, you know, wouldn't look for it too, but in terms of actually contacting the complainant, that would have been left to the Sheriff's Department unless they asked us to help.
It's it's less than a mile outside the city, so.
Sure.
I was just wondering why they didn't dispatch us.
Yeah, as a as a general rule, you know, even in the scenario that Todd gave, they're generally not going to just automatically dispatch us, but a lot of times the Sheriff's Department or whoever would be like, hey, that's close to Ashland.
And you all have the same CAD, right?
Yeah.
It's like a, think about block, just a little typing, running, what dispatch is doing, so. That's my report, sir. Same ministry report.
Leslie wanted me to pass on the park four two trucks next, yeah, next week on the thirteenth, Tuesday night, five to eight. We've got four or five trucks lined up for this one, so should be a pretty good one to go to. In terms of irrigation, still working on getting some answers and options with our accounting software. If they haven't, they'll provide us with the answers that we were hoping for or just answers in the right direction yet, so more to follow on that. Other than that, I know some folks have shared the fifty-four country event at the Optimus Club, so that's something that Greece has been working on for a while now with with staff, so excited to see that popping up. Go out and dance if you are someone.
Safe time, safe time for.
For the chief, there is a bill that has passed both houses. It's a large bill that does a lot for police departments. It gives officers a right to counseling, requires police chiefs to attend special training specifically that adds to their post requirements. This bill is expected to be passed by Sheriff Governor Person, and so when that happens, I'll let you all know.
Is that the basic training for new chiefs and sheriffs?
You know, I haven't gotten all the details, but there's something about chiefs in there.
I know the Missouri Police Chiefs Association is is lobbying for, like, there'd be, like, basic training for police chiefs, which honestly is a good thing. As somebody who's been a new police chief that where they were like, well, here's the keys, go forth and don't F up. It's, you know, there's nothing out there currently, no standard to show chiefs how to do their job, so.
But if it gets passed, I will certainly let you all know and advise you. A few days ago, a federal judge in Tennessee banned a law about banning drag shows. There is some considerable discussion that that will allow, cause a reexamination of what cities and states can do for adult entertainment. That could be a good thing, it could be a bad thing. We're paying attention to it. We'll let you know if anything comes of it.
Police chief public board.
Well. So you got your whiteout with you, the first sentence in there where it says we're full staff, that's going to change here in about two weeks. So earlier we touched on college education a little bit and, well, let's start off with the good news. Jeff Behringer's in the academy, doing well, was appointed by his class to be the class captain. That's, we're very proud of that. We're also proud of the fact that one of our own will be receiving his master's degree in December. And we kind of anticipated that shortly around that time that he would be, you know, seeking a job that would utilize his master's degree. And turns out he got an offer that was quite a bit earlier than anticipated, one that he can't refuse, so we'll be losing Desmond. Tentatively, he hasn't got the final offer yet, but has already given us a heads up that he'll be leaving. So one step forward, one step back. But again, we're very happy for for Desmond and his achievements. This can be great for him and his family. Lane Wilson, the other young man that we have in the academy, graduates this Thursday. Will be going, several of us will be going to his academy to, or to his graduation, rather, to show support for him. And he will be taking about a week off between now and when he actually starts field training to burn off some comp time and just get a break between class and being force fed a lot of information really quick. We've added to our part-time roster with a gentleman named Tracy Clayton, who worked for the sheriff's office for a lot of years. We're pretty fortunate to have somebody with his caliber of experience and training and knowledge that he he left the sheriff's office to take a job with Equipment Share less than a year ago and just couldn't stay away from it. So we picked him up part-time. We, and a couple of meetings ago, talked about a defensive tactics program where we've adopted Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu and entered into an agreement with Shawn Woods' gym in Columbia. That program has officially been launched. In fact, we had three guys, they went through a class this morning together, so we're pretty happy about that. And then earlier this year, when you guys passed the budget, one of the things that we asked for in the budget was some money to purchase a software system called Guardian Tracking, which we literally yesterday implemented when we finalized some training. And it's designed, what it is, is it's kind of an early warning or intervention software that's used to very, you know, measure various metrics for individual officers such as use of force pursuits, commendations, complaints. We also use it, we're going to be implementing part of our our field training program in there where instead of keeping like daily observation reports on a printed piece of paper, there's actually a form in the system that we can fill out and it saves it for as long as we're subscribing to this program, so. That's about all I got. If you got anything for me, entertain questions.
So you'll leave that.
Short one?
Yeah, we're, we we are going to be short one when Desmond leaves. We anticipate, if he gets the offer, when he believes that he's going to get it, we anticipate that happening in about three weeks, so.
Any questions? Moving on to Alderman. Alderman Plank?
Yep, just real quick synopsis of the Ashland Environment Coalition meeting we had last night. The Kentucky Derby fundraiser was, they felt a success. They said they cleared gross forty-five hundred dollars, but that's before expenses, so they haven't really figured any expenses out, but they made about forty-five hundred minus wherever expenses they come up with. The Fourth of July Parade is on the fourth of July at nine AM. Make sure that gets out there. And then also the fireworks, which was already mentioned tonight, July twenty-second at eight forty-five. And then also they need probably one, maybe two more people to fully staff their board, so. That's all I have.
Alderman Old?
No report.
Alderman Bell?
I had two people reach out to me. One was about some kids at the lake. And I talked to Kyle and I talked to Gabe and I'm going to call the property owner back, but apparently there is a gang of middle schoolers who are cussing and playing rap music or something.
Did you read the email they sent you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And they originally had some, had, some of them had permission from the landowner and that has since been revoked. And so, and I think it was also maybe it started before the pool was open. Anyway, so I got some complaints from the neighbors with kids just saying that it was really foul language and loud and that they didn't have any connection to the neighborhood. So I think that's been resolved and should they show back up?
It's my knowledge, we've not had any more complaints or.
Yeah.
Nor have we seen anybody out there.
But if they do show up, you guys will show up and say.
Right.
You're now.
If they call us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So from the, I mean, that's an Eagle, Eagle Lake.
It's the lake that sits in between Bluegrass South and Eagle Lakes.
So we've, so we've been dealing with that issue and then got a call from someone who's trying to put in a pool and just trying to get a hold of people and having a little bit of difficulty, but he said he talked to Doris, then I think he's.
He's going to submit a plan.
Yeah, so he's going to be submitting a plan, but I think he had some frustration with like the lines of communication and so I don't know.
He didn't like the answer. He was given with those lines of communication. He has a lot that cannot support pool. Doesn't like that answer, but.
Is that, is that within our code though, or is it just too, why does it, why is it?
He wants to build a pool within an existing easement.
And and his his designer said that he can, he can design a pool that will go in that area and not interfere with easements. So I told him to bring your plan to to us and we'll look at it and most of all we'll do.
Okay.
That's what they said.
Okay, so the ball.
Can't do a permanent structure in an easement and this would be a permanent structure, so.
Okay, well.
I've had numerous conversations.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll wait on that plan and then we'll see where it goes.
Anything else?
I see. I think that's it.
Only thing I've got, Lions Club has a, they've just collected enough, not money, but donations of recyclables to get a second park bench. So they should have either on the way or, I don't think it's come yet, but two park benches that we had discussed putting at the veterans. So they were asking who they needed to deliver it to, so.
Probably works fine.
We'll try and get those benches headed your way.
Great. Is it possible to move two or three park benches to the food truck for that one day and one back? Where they bolted down?
So we have all the park benches within the park are anchored down except for some of the picnic tables in the pavilions. I'm assuming that's what you're talking about.
I'm sorry, I think it's.
Yeah, that's that's not that big of a deal. We should be able to talk to that reason.
I just want, because that was the only downfall, a lot of the people sit at the food par, at the truck, food trucks, they had no place to sit. And then they, if they did tailgate in the back of the car or the truck, they just went home. So I just.
Last, food truck that they did last year, the Legion pulled their tables out, but that particular night was so incredibly hot, nobody utilized them, so they may not walk out.
So that's something that we can do to accommodate if needed.
Thanks, sir. Sorry, Mr. Lewis.
No, that's all I have.
All right, moving on to general comments. Public, Alderman. Please come to the podium and state your name, sir.
Chuck Donahue, Charles Donahue, four oh seven Billy Joe Sack Drive. I'm here about, on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Ashland Board of Alderman approved the four oh one seven, the four oh one Billy Joe Sack Drive project and Alderman agreed on option three B. Allstate's consultants' cost estimates were a hundred and nine thousand for the project. And the public works director at that time said that his department could do the job for. Works Director at that time said that his department could do the job for 50% of the estimate. First half of February, Dan Vandevore came by my house, and he was wearing his City of Ashland name tag and a City of Ashland hat and showed me the plans for 3B. I expressed empathy knowing he had been unable to sell his home due to all the flooding that had been going on at his property. I took Dan to my backyard after he showed me the plans to say, showed me the collection points where and stuff, and I told him that I had Richard from Crazy Dicks had been out recently and to remove my retaining wall, because I was having some issues with that already, what they walked me for, and quoted me to removal of the retaining wall and terracing the hill. I also showed him the northwest corner where the junction box was going to be put, and could it possibly be collecting point for the water coming from West Oaks? Dan said he was doing this as a favor for the city and had nothing to do with the design but would pass along my requests. On February 18th, Dan reported to James Crell and Wes Bolton that all the affected property owners expressed will, will, uh, williness to grant easements via e-mail. The first week of May, I received the first easement request in the mail. The plan was totally different than the 3B plan that Dan had shown me in February. Also, the plan didn't address the northwest corner where the water from the West Oaks subdivision is eroding my and my neighbor's properties. I called Ashland City Hall to discuss the conflicting plans. I was forwarded to Public Works. I left a message that these weren't the plans on a voicemail that I was shown by Dan and I needed to speak with somebody. Did not receive a call back. On May 20th, I received another request for easement. Since I hadn't heard back, I emailed thestreets@ashland.us, but I got from the website saying that was the Public Works site, and stated that I had received another letter in the mail and I am not agreeing to come across my backyard unless the drainage issues were addressed. The next day, I received an email from James Crell that he was out of town but would reach out to me the next Monday. Ended up meeting with Wes Bolton from Allstates and James Crell on June 8th. After meeting, we agreed to remove the retaining wall and terrace it back. Also, James said he would move my shed since the new junction box would affect me being able to get it out of my box or get it out of my shed. Wes also said that he would be involved in the grading to address the northwest corner I signed an easement paper the next day. I even emailed them and thanked them and went over the plans that we had decided on. The project started May of 2022. Fast forward to March 2023, the city had already went through and excavated out, they were doing about six to eight foot down to put this 36-inch pipe in, and they were putting gravel in, and then that was leaving a bunch of excess clay. Well, they ended up piling two big piles in my backyard. I'm going to go, bring your dump trucks back here. No, I come home one day and they had spread that all over my backyard. Where the retaining wall was and used the clay to fill in the ruts from their dump trucks and other equipment. At that time, I emailed Wes Bolton and he assured me that he would come out and assess the issue. On March 22nd, I received a certified letter from the city, Kyle Michael and James Conley were going to be the new project managers, and they were to remove six inches of clay soil and replace it with local topsoil. I was still insisting that all the clay be removed, but was not getting any agreement with Conley. My only request that I wouldn't budge on was that they wouldn't go outside of the easement for the drainage, and they just stayed within it. I didn't want to give up any more of my backyard. The higher, the city had a parent, a landscape company to do the work. After it was done, Mr. Conley said, check back in with them in a month to see how the, it was going. Couple weeks went by, I noticed that some areas, the grass wasn't taking off, and when I pulled back the grass, the sod, to see what was going on, there's still clay there. There was no topsoil put down. I found some areas that even in the front yard where they, where they brought the rock in to do the back part where they excavated and where they put the rock in, they literally put the sod over top of the rock. Area where there was some dirt, then when I left the night before, there was an area where they had put a little dirt down there, that the sod took off great. So I texted John Conley and let him know about my concerns. He texted me back and said he didn't work for the city anymore, and then I needed to contact Kyle. I emailed Kyle and CC'd my Aldermen, Mr. Plank and Mr. Bolt Car, and also CC'd Mr. Slender in there. Kyle's response was, I didn't water it, and to plant more grass in the fall. I used so much water that the city, two days after my meter was read, there was somebody out, my father-in-law was there, somebody was out checking my meter. I'm just assuming they thought maybe I had a water leak, I don't know, because I have 14,000 gallons above my normal use so far for six weeks. I'm just letting the city know what I'm going through here, or not the city, I'm letting the Board of Aldermen know what I'm going through here, and if you have any suggestions other than.
Any questions, comments?
I would say thank you for the comment.
Thank you.
Yep.
I've got pictures.
Thank you for your time.
Did the pictures to Darla for the record? Or you can give your pictures to Darla for the record?
Okay.
Okay, that works.
Do you have a question, comments from the public?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Somethin'. I have a second.
Second.
Almond?
Hi.
Hi.